I'm not that way.
I twisted my ankle back in. Pursued the first week of October. Don't go to the doctor.
All right, we're calling the city of Kiwanee, a special common council meeting to order on January second, twenty twenty four at five thirty. Let the record show all members are present with with Nikki should be arriving shortly. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seated.
If they're not. Okay.
All right, so item three is review the twenty twenty four city employee wages and salaries. The common council may enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C. To consider an employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the common council has jurisdiction. Or exercises responsibility. To with review of resolution number twenty twenty three dash twenty thirty five. And discuss changes to stated compensation rates there too. So we have that item on the agenda tonight. We've been advised we do not have to go to close session. It's an option for the council if they so choose. Otherwise, we can open up the the discussion we had in our packet. Some information from the city administrator. I don't know if Heath, if you want to start. A little bit of background on what you had, or? Anyone has any questions regarding what was in the package?
I guess. I'd like to know how we got here.
That was on my part. We had discussions back in probably July. Budgets and. A scales for some of the employees and. Joanne indicated to me that she was going to try and seek a little extra money for. Brenda's position. And she's going to pay increase for herself. And I said, that's fine, we'll put it in there and there's Tony. Hi, Tony. And. Can you hear us, Tony?
That's not working.
Can you hear us, Tony?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No. Can you hear us?
Can we hear him?
He can hear us, we can't hear him.
He's muted.
We can't hear you.
No. How about now?
Unmute yourself.
He might be unmuted. Well, we can hear him.
I don't understand.
Are you talking in sign language?
Sounds up to you too.
Let me try my phone.
Maybe he muted on his computer.
But I muted himself.
If you go on and picture that she doesn't show a speaker.
No.
By the way.
Definitely that to see it. The volume on the very bottom show.
I can't use that one.
Yes, no.
Do you want to call Tony and have him on speakerphone? And then he's able to hear and speak through that and that'll at least. Get us where we can have communication if needed because I'm not sure.
You put a phone over there so we can we can for the recording. We can have it. Can we put the phone by the microphone?
Sure. Once you get him, Heath, if I put your phone over here, that'll be great.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes, I hear.
No. Not on this computer, no.
Hey, Tony. Uh, you appear to be frozen in time here. On our screen.
Yeah, but what I did was I linked and tried keeping in on my phone instead of my laptop.
Yeah. So we'll put you over by the mayor so we can. So everybody can hear you better.
All right, I forget where we're at, I'm sorry.
You heard the noise. We didn't go into closed session.
No, we're not in closed session.
Yeah, we're still open.
He was explaining.
Anyway, they they said, okay, that's fine, we'll we'll have to work on. Creating the justification for that and then. All those other things started happening, including police issues and everything else. And so when it came to writing this cover memo in December, I simply forgot. That we even had that conversation until she said, you should remember that discussion we had and I was like. Oh. Now I do. So. Everything else sort of flowed from that because those are the only two positions that actually had a change. I actually didn't know about the police chief change because I didn't review that part of the. Part of the budget, I don't recall even. Really even thinking about the number at the time. Because I reviewed all the budgets. Through there up to that point, but I didn't. Do anything with it, didn't process it that way, so simply. Simply put, the the cover memo I wrote for December basically. Failed to account for the two positions. So given that I said that they were blank at three percent, that was what you intended to do. So assuming that that's what you intended to do, the. The most straightforward fix on these two positions is to simply. As Tony would tell you, voice motion to direct staff to. To directing the change to those two positions effectively immediately and then we would. Draft a res- a resolution, basically implementing that for your adoption next Monday. But if you adopt it effective immediately, then they would essentially go into effect, we just simply do the paper. Paper. Sign off next week. Good news, good night, screw up, I didn't. Didn't account for those two positions, didn't think about it. Just kind of processed it and moved on because I've. All these other things I'm dealing with and I didn't think about those two things coming through.
So we're we're getting some of the background context and I just wanted to go to what came out of finance tonight. They had a motion. To recommend a council, a clerk treasure position at thirty three dollars and sixty four cents an hour. Administrative assistant at eighteen dollars and fifty four cents an hour. With all salaries then being at three percent across the board. That motion carried unanimously, so that that's the recommendation that came from finance tonight.
What I would suggest is that. If you adopt to change those similar to that recommendation that you also include. Some kind of. Basic comment that this applies to only. Those positions that are not governed by the collective by any collective bargaining agreement. Just so that it's clear what your recommendation is because. The CBA applies to a different set of percentages. They were already pre-approved. So they automatically kick in.
Is this open for discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I guess. My interpretation of your email, I thought you were. Stating that you weren't knowledgeable of the situation. And so that sheds a little bit different light for me as to. You know, my opinion on that. I mean, and I'm I find everyone makes mistakes, so it is what it is, but I I am glad to hear that that. Was the situation.
We did have this discussion. Seemingly forever ago. And. I remember saying, go ahead, factor it into your budget presentation and we'll just go from there and then. I got caught up in any number of other things and lost track of all things to the point where I even wrote a memo where it said. One thing and what in fact I'd already said, oh, yeah, feel free to make a recommendation in that regard and then. Never thought to follow up later on to say, okay, now if we're going to do that, now you gotta justify it. Going forward and that never happened either, so. Where we failed was I forgot the conversation and then. Having forgotten the conversation, we didn't then. Follow up with justification for asking for something other than just the base three percent, which everybody else got.
Ready?
So at the finance meeting during the budget process. We very, very briefly discussed that it was a three percent raise. That was what that was what people are getting, so I'm a little confused as to how two salaries that weren't three percent got into a resolution. Without discussion, without council approval, without going through finance, without going through personnel, I'm a little confused at that.
Well, and you've also got the chief here that feels that if it was factored into her budget.
Right.
At a six percent increase.
Was never, never discussed.
Understood, so that's a question. What's that?
But it was in the budget.
It can be in the budget, but. I mean, the council, the council has control of the city's perks. So. I I'm just a little confused and a little disturbed that, quite frankly, that that that. Raises were, I mean, it it looks to me like.
Raises represented to you for adoption. To the extent that again, as I say, we didn't. Provide a justification for increases beyond three percent. It is, it is still just a draft resolution. It still requires approval. But as I say, in my memo. That if you had intended to adopt straight three percent. Increases for everybody. Then that's what we should go with and then we have to make the two changes to the two numbers as previously suggested. It's. Resolutions are always provided for adoption and they can be changed or altered or. Modified. At the meeting. They. Aren't always finished products by the time they get here. And that's never been my experience that resolutions necessarily have to come to the council in a finished form. They always come to you in a draft form and then they're adopted as they are, or you modify them, or you change some language, or you. Include languages I've done before where it's a draft resolution subject to review by the city attorney or some other legal body to make sure that it's. Correct and we can correct and so on. And that's been my experience throughout the years that it would never occur to me to write a resolution, it wasn't considered draft until it was adopted.
I think the problem is, if I can speak on behalf of the council, being that I've spoken to almost all of you and many of you many times. The the problem that the council is facing is we're here tonight because the council's been presented with something that they believed. Was. Three percent across the board, it may have numbers that didn't match three percent. It may have budgets that have more money than three percent in it. But when the conversation is being reiterated by staff and it's in our packet as three percent, yes, you can argue that the numbers were in there as presented, but. The whole way along, this council was on the impression was three percent. If any. Employee or employees is looked upon as needing a bump for whatever reason. That's fine. That process should be getting a personnel as the justification and then that process should go through finance to get approved and recommended up to council. There's no room for misunderstanding. At at the budget time. Okay, there's a line item in the budget, well, okay, I guess shame on the council for not picking that up, but the council didn't approve the expenditure.
Getting a calculator out to to.
Council did not approve that expenditure. So I, the feelings that I was getting from the council has been that they they felt slighted. I mean, they felt they were approving three percent across the board with the exception of the collective bargaining agreement with the police union. Anybody feel free to speak up if I'm misspeaking on behalf of the council.
Not slighted isn't the right word, I feel.
I'm just saying. We are trying to be as fair, clear and straight up. All along and there there were mistakes made. And I think i- if we can recognize that and move on and have the council re-express their intentions moving forward with the wages. We'll be in a much better place. Robin, please go ahead.
I guess. My comment would be, when are we supposed to do that? And for me, just with this being the first year that I've had to do this. Because we didn't last year with chief. Frankly, just with becoming chief and. Finding out that my wage was moving along with everyone else. I appreciated that. But. You know, the last twenty nine years of my career has always been through the bargaining unit. And so when in the year are we supposed to start that process? When I started the budget, I said to Joanne, what do I do for my wage for next year? Well, put in what? You know, increase you believe that you deserve. So that was what I did.
And that that would be correct, right? You have to budget to cover that.
Right, and or as numbers is figuring as most people in this group are. I guess I had just assumed that that had been done because I've been doing but nothing but numbers all year long. So it would have been very easy to assume. That mine was not at three. But but yet it's like, when is it presented to like me as the chief? When is the discussion going to be? About what you think your raise should be next year or what the what the counselor, you know, when you ever get to voice your opinion on. I think that I deserve this or I'm looking for this next year and this is why.
Or if you were outside of the collective bargain agreement, your staff falls under that, but if it would be administration. Uh, street department, any other employee that's not in the union. It would be their supervisor or theirselves coming forward and and making a request based on something. Uh, whatever the case may be outlining that I I feel that, you know, this individual.
That was just part of the budget process.
Right.
Which is why I budgeted it that way.
I think you would probably go, Robin, right to the administrator with something like that. Just down with the administrator and talk to him.
But I did.
I mean, when Joanne says, you know, put in a budget what you put in the budget, what you feel. You think. A raise should be, so you put in six percent. Well, you could have put in forty percent. That doesn't necessarily mean then that you'll get a forty percent raise because. Forty percent and six percent really have no difference because you're adding them into the budget.
But I would have expected somebody would have saw that and been like, what what do you think, what is this?
But we talked about it, I think we've talked about the three percent raise, I don't know how many times across the board. I I just got to give you my opinion here and my opinion is. I think we have a miscommunication in City Hall here. A severe miscommunication, not so much with the council, but with city hall staff themselves. And I'm going to tell you why. Just pull this up off Facebook. Hard to believe when you love your job. But when your dedication, knowledge. And above beyond go beyond efforts. You get nothing. It may be a sign that it's time to move on. City employee. City hall staff puts on Facebook. Kind of baloney is that? Why would we do that? If if an employee has a problem, not finished yet, if an employee has a problem. With their salary or anything else, then they they should feel free that they can go to the administrator. Because that's where they should be going in City Hall. Not to Facebook. Now you're going to have half the community. Against us again. And we did nothing. We did nothing wrong. And now this is going to get out of God only know, people have been responding to it already. Yeah, that's right, you're right, yeah, dying to leave. Why aren't people going, why can't we get along in City Hall staff here? The same thing happened with the fireator rental. It seems that we can't get together. Staff at City Hall to get this resolved. If there's a problem with salaries. Brendan Nimmer and I can say it because it's on social media, should not be going to social media with this. You go to the administrator with this. If you feel you're getting treated unfairly, you don't publicize this on social media.
Can I, can I reiterate here?
Absolutely.
She did go to the administrator.
And and put it on anyway?
I don't know, I don't know what goes on, she went to the administrator to talk to the administrator.
And?
And I told her we'd have to go through a specific channel to make sure this happens. Okay, ultimately, it's going to have to go to personnel.
Well, then you're going to have to talk to her again. Because this is uncalled for.
So I'd like to say something that.
Robin, you had your unit first.
I guess my thing was, was this is why we talked about personnel and doing reviews and that would be a perfect situation in your review to be able to say, I feel like I deserve a raise or whatever and then personnel. You know, that's what we've been really working hard to kind of cover this year so we could get a handle on these things. And I don't know, I I don't know what happened.
Well, you know, okay, I'm going to talk, I'm going to say, um, there is a lack of communication. In in all of city government here, okay? We don't know who we're supposed to be going to. You have, you know, your personnel who takes care of certain things, you have finance that takes care of certain things, you know, we have an administrator, there's there's a lack of communication between all of that. We as employees don't know where we're supposed to go, who we're supposed to talk to, I did my my employee evaluations. And so when I did the budget, I talked with Heath, the administrator, and I said. You know, I feel that, you know, Brenda proves to me every time that I can give her extra work, she does it, she gets it done. She has very little, you know. I I don't have to babysit her. Okay, so I did the even, you know, the employee evaluation, so when it came budget time, I felt that she deserved more than three percent. And we had that discussion. And he told me to go ahead and do it. We had, you know, we had a discussion about my salary. He did some research on it and told me, you know, told me that I was underpaid, so in that discussion, he said, go ahead and put an increase in for you. For yourself, so I did, I did do three percent across the board for everybody. Until I had those discussions with the administrator.
Okay, so if I could, if I can break in for one second. We sat here, Heath says, it's in the packet, it's three percent, he says it's three percent, you know. You know that your salary is not three percent, you're right, you don't say a word. Am I supposed to? Am I supposed to? I mean, I don't understand where, when am I supposed, I assumed that again, because of lack of communication, I don't know what he talks to you guys about. I don't know what information he talks. The packet says three percent, you know it's not. You know it's not, and you're right, so so that's my big complaint, like you sat there and let us be misinformed, you knew differently. But I'm not the boss. He's the boss. You're sitting here as our treasurer, you created this document. You created this document.
We, we, we have resolutions that we vote on as a council. For the staff guidelines, so that resolution in my book is what we've adopted. For. The three percent raise, the six percent raise, whatever, that's why we do a resolution. So that everybody knows that that is. What the council agreed to, am I wrong on that?
No.
When we vote on a resolution, that's adopted, that's adopted that day that we voted on it. And that's the document that the staff is supposed to go by.
Well, I think the the problem ultimately what's happening is we're 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 not, things are not matching. The conversation, the packet, the resolution. Right, the 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 conversation, none of it's matching, we're saying things aloud, the council is making a motion. And something else is coming up and I I I can't explain it, we're hearing some explanations here, but we. To answer your question, how do you go about the process of getting someone a raise and who do you answer to? Yes, it's the administrator. That is who you would answer to, that's who you would make a recommendation to, that's who Robin would go to and myself and those. And then that would take the proper course through the the committees, those would be recommended at committees. Probably simultaneous with with the budget time.
So through Heath then would be going back, I mean, I'm not clear either, so I want clarification.
Okay, if if the administrator is getting a recommendation from department staff. On a raise or or a negative thing, uh, reprimand, whatever the case is on on personnel. Then he would direct that. To the appropriate.
And that hasn't been happening throughout the year. What didn't happen is the process during the budget. That happened, that didn't happen because I don't think people may not have understood that clearly. Remember, we we created the personnel committee after it was defunct for a number of years. And it has been very clear during the year, that's the process and it has been working. Very good, the issue is during the budget process, that did not happen.
It was for whatever reason for the appropriation.
It didn't, it didn't go on the agenda for the, there was no. Communication to me to put it on the personnel, for us to review it in November, December, to make that happen.
I think, I think, Robin, you have to understand that, I think all the employees have to understand that just because you submit a budget. Does not mean that that's the final, that's not the final.
But I just, you know. When is, when is that conversation supposed to take place? I mean, I submitted my budget.
I would say, I would say September.
I can't.
In September, I submitted my budget.
Make sure you're on a personnel committee next year.
To City Hall, but there's still. You know, four months left of the year. I mean, that's four months of performance yet. I mean, who am I to be going in and beginning of September and saying, next year I think I deserve this for a raise and this is why. You know, at the end of the year, you meet and you say.
But then it's too late.
Because the budget's, yeah.
Well, that's what's happened this year.
September, September is when you should be looking. That's what I think.
That's all new information to me.
Well, I think, Robin, if if we're looking at.
Eric, you have a question, go ahead, Eric.
No, I was just saying, we we will, Robin, an excellent answer to how this should work, but. We're talking about it.
September.
I think we're looking at performance, it shouldn't come down to the last four months. You know, it shouldn't have to come down to if we're going to give a raise based on performance. Whether we get a raise or not, shouldn't be based on our performance of our last three or four months. If the performance throughout the whole year should be the same thing, not just the last three or four months.
Well.
It's too late by then, you can't.
And to answer, to answer your question, Robin, whether it's within the four months or we've done it mid-budget cycle. For different employees, different bumps, Heath had cited some of those things, we've done that at the county level too, there comes a time where all of a sudden there's a reason for something. And you may make a bump, but again, that would be a cycle through the personnel and finance to make sure that it can be paid for. So it, I don't know that it would be a drop dead date. That, you know, I got to have my request in for, in your case, you can't do it for staff, so it would be for yourself. But but for any other city staff to get a raise inside or outside. It's got to be justified through the personnel. And it's got to be paid for through finance. If it's non-budgeted, we've done that, it's non-budgeted, we've done that too, finance needs to find the money. And council needs to approve that expenditure, so I guess it could happen anytime theoretically. Am I wrong?
That's correct. You can do it anytime, you adopted the budget, particularly in our case, it's a specific line item for that. Position.
But if you keep it open ended and we're in the same position that we are right now, where people have done that towards the end here and now we're. In a situation where. It's dilemma.
Joanne, did I hear you say that this document was altered?
Yeah, he he added more stuff to it, I only had it, I I don't know what he all did to it.
You put in your, you put in your salary.
I formatted, I didn't do anything but put them blind.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I just know that when I was trying to go into it that you were in it, so and then you added like the election workers and and whatever, because I didn't have those in there.
I guess the last thing I was just going to say is I would like to see more. Communication with city hall staff among themselves for one thing. I think that's where that needs to start, I really do. Because I can see this. You know, it's happened a number of times already. And I can see there just isn't the communication. With city hall staff here. Sometimes it seems to me the left hand doesn't really know what the right hand is doing. And I think that's why we get into problems like this, because if someone's not sure. Then you check with someone and say, you know, I, this is my understanding of this, what do you think, or I. Or I'm putting these X amount of dollars in the budget, do you remember this to be this? Or I'm putting this this type of raise in the budget, do you remember, did we approve that or or how are we doing this, but. It's pretty hard to us to fix something, I don't think we can fix it because it's got to be start here first.
Well, the other thing I'd like to see happen is every committee. Agenda and packet needs to go to all the council people, so we're on, we're in the know what's going on.
I do send out the packets to everybody.
I didn't get the packet for the finance committee.
I didn't send that one out, okay.
So. Just that's a, somebody needs to.
Are made unfortunately.
Notes need to be made, whatever.
I don't have to tell you, Robin, but. No, we didn't know what to tell you. Other than everybody sitting around this table was under the understanding it was going to be three percent across the board. That was the understanding of.
But at the same time, at that meeting, she brought it to our attention immediately.
Well.
That's true, but I didn't know, I didn't know what the other figures were. At that point in time, you know, I don't go through everybody's salaries, I was making this.
And to be honest, John, and that's that's the first time that we've had that resolution. And to, and to be honest, John, and that's, that's the first time that we've had that resolution spells out dollar amount in salaries. We've always, when, when the council has approved it for as long as I can remember, I'm sure longer than you can remember. It's been, if it's three percent, it's three percent. We didn't see everybody's salary. It, it, we don't need to see it, it's gonna go up three percent over what it was last year. We can see it and I believe, I understand Joanne brought that forward. It's maybe more proper, you've done that in other places or what, I'm not, I can let you speak to that, but.
And this is the, this is the twenty twenty two.
If those numbers don't match three percent.
This is the twenty twenty three. I think, John, you requested this. I get it, I get up my calculator, take, take the numbers, times, times one point oh three. And that's the only reason I think that we know that this was, that this wasn't three percent.
Correct.
And honestly.
And I don't. And you, and if you hadn't said something, we never would have known. And so that's what bothers, that's what bothers me, is that we said in this meeting thinking that we were voting for three percent raises. And in fact, we were not voting for that at all. It wasn't three percent all the way, all, all across the board. It was not, it was, it was.
Well, I, I think they made that clear that there was an airmaid and that two people were supposed to, we were supposed to have that knowledge.
That's, I guess, that, that's what's clear. The council understands what the council was intended to vote on. We understand there was a miscommunication, alright? Uh, and we understand that it needs to be better communicated going forward. But at the end of the day, when, when we have something in our packet and it's spelled out, it's reiterated verbally in a meeting. The council needs to have confidence in staff that this is what they're voting on. We're back here tonight to, to do it again, we're doing another do-over. And we're gonna get it right, but I have all the confidence that we're gonna, we're gonna get past this. I, I hope we can keep feelings in check and learn from where we're at, but we, we have the proper procedures, we have the committees. We have the administrator, we have the mayor, we have people that are here. If there's a problem, come to me.
Well, and, and the other thing that I guess could have happened too is, um, that discussion, even though the memo didn't get sent out. Um, Joanne could have sent an email out to the council, hey, just so you know, Heath and I had this discussion about this pay increase for particular people and just to let us in the know.
But see, okay, that's, I, I.
She's not trying, she's trying not to overstep herself if I.
I have a boss, that's his responsibility to let you guys know what's being discussed. That's not my job. My job, you know, if I didn't have an administrator, yeah, then it would be my job to do that. And have that communication with you guys. But there's an administrator, so that's on him or on that, that position. To make sure that there's communication between the council. What's going on?
I see, I, I guess that's where we become team player, players, right?
But, okay, but am, am I supposed to, like, so every time he does something that, you know, that, and he doesn't do something, maybe it's, you know, I don't wanna say him, because I don't wanna, you know, whatever, the administrator doesn't do something specifically, am I supposed to like, you know, follow after him and, and, or, you know, that position and say, oh, well, he forgot to do this? Or, you know, he forgot to add that, you know, I mean, I guess.
I understand what she's saying. You can get into a gray area where you're.
Yeah, you can, but you know, sometimes reminding somebody to just, hey.
But see, okay, there's, then, then it should be a communication between him and I before it goes out then to you guys. But there's.
Don't get any, any communication back. Then you go to the mayor and then it goes to the council.
Sometimes you're already so far down the road that you find yourselves here, okay? Sometimes it's just here.
I'm just tired of being here.
I, I agree.
This is the second time and, and like Wendy said, what, two months that we're here? Because there was a misunderstanding. These misunderstandings are getting quite frustrating.
Yeah, and the misunderstandings affect, affect everyone, so.
So, our city attorney is sitting here, listening to all this. I have a question, Tony. Okay. Do you have an issue? Do you find it, do you find it an issue that we have this resolution? And, and, and it's, and these numbers are, uh, being misrepresented to council? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I won't look at you. Do you understand my question? Do you understand my question?
Uh, why don't you repeat it?
Do you have an issue with these numbers in the resolution being misrepresented to council?
Well, that's a difficult to answer because I have investigated the whole situation, right? All I know sitting here is we've got, there was a, a document presented to you all that said, everybody is getting a three percent raise across the board. And then understandably, nobody at the time on council went through and said, well, if they pull out my calculator and make sure that these numbers match. Right? So then what was approved didn't match up with the three percent. Now, whether that was a misrepresentation in my eyes, you know, under the legal term misrepresentation, that's a fraudulent statement, right? Uh, I certainly think there was a discommunication here. Uh, whether there was any intent to misrepresent, misrepresent or mislead. I can't say that because I just haven't investigated it. Uh, I haven't been asked to. Uh, but certainly, obviously, the numbers don't match up. So whether it was intentional or unintentional, I just, I, I can't make an opinion on that, other than clearly what I've come to learn is that, like I said before. Council seems to be across, or thought everybody was getting a three percent raise and that's what you ultimately rubber stamp.
And I guess what my question is very specifically, if, if the clerk treasurer knew that these numbers were not three percent.
How does that?
How would you interpret that? And, 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 and said nothing?
Well, the, that's not a legal question, right? It's more of an interpretive question and, and I can't get into Joanne's head. You know, I can't say for sure that, you know, he heard it and, and intentionally didn't. Uh, if that is the case, you know, that's a, that's an employee related problem. Uh, but I, I, again, I haven't investigated, I haven't asked everybody, so it's really hard for me to conclude anything. Other than the two documents didn't match up.
So, no, I don't, I don't believe there's been any intent. I, I believe there's just been a, a breakdown in communication along the way. And, um, you know, the council, uh, you know, has openly voted on what they believed was before them. And that, you know, un- unfortunately didn't match up. Uh, so I, I thi- I think going forward, we, we know what we need to work on, we, we need to get better checks and balances. Uh, maybe that would be a great place to defer personnel. And we can look at, at getting some clearer structure uh, on how things are passed through uh, communication wise, whether it's in department, in the city, in our government, whatever it is. Uh, for clarity, I mean, I'm hearing from staff that they're uncertain on things and procedures and processes. We're hearing that, alright? So it's clearly, and what we're seeing happening in a couple of our meetings. Clearly that's happened. So I, I think we, we need to really get work on that and get ahead of that, John.
I just, you know, I, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus because people make mistakes. But on the other hand, I don't wanna get thrown under the bus either. I don't wanna go out in public and have to answer for this kind of stuff, which is certainly I'm gonna have to do. You know, I don't wanna get thrown under the bus either. I'm not here to crucify anybody or say, ah, you made the mistake and you should have done this, but on the same token, I don't wanna be.
Well, you're right, finger pointing is gonna get us, uh, advancing forward, but the council's gonna have to answer. That's like it works, good and bad.
I didn't come here to hate you or wrong.
So I'm still not clear with the resolution.
You're right, that's why I'm here.
So Heath, if I can speak to the resolution, um, we had a motion, a recommendation from finance. And after discussion, if the council is ready to make a motion based on that or, or on difference of that. Whichever it is, you wanted to make sure we had language in there that would say.
What Tony recommended was, um, it'd be cleaner, um, a voice motion, directing the change effective immediately. Directing staff to draft and provide a new resolution embodying the voted upon changes for approval and execution on the next council meeting. So if you're looking to change those two lines. Through the numbers that finance committee recommended. That you would do that, you know, vote directing us to change the resolution effective imme- the, to change those two salary, those two wage lines effective immediately. And then we would provide a draft resolution basically encompassing those changes at the next meeting.
So we don't need to mention collective bargaining agreement? That's already in the resolution, correct?
Because it's tied to the resolution that you previously adopted.
So essentially, if, if whatever the council wants to do, but what came from finance was a recommendation to council for the clerk treasurer to be at thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents an hour. The administrative assistant at eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents an hour. And all other salaries at three percent across the board. That would be the recommendation from finance. And that would be language if that, and that would be effective immediate.
Was Robin's stuff, yeah?
Yes, Tony.
That concludes Robin Miller?
No.
Yes. Hers, hers was correct in that.
Hers was correct on the resolution if council wants three percent across the board. Her dollar amount was correct on the resolution at a three percent rate. The clerk treasurer, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, John.
Clerk treasurer and the administrative assistant were shown above a three percent increase. That's why those dollar amounts were corrected to a three percent.
Here's what I would recommend from a, from a paperwork procedure, if I did anything, just slightly amended, uh, slightly amending my result on. Is that because there's a lot going on. I think at this point, so finance has recommended, finance has voted unanimously on what you just like their job. I think we all know what it's supposed to say now, right? So I think you don't necessarily need to take a vote tonight. So you can direct city staff to prepare an amended resolution or a new resolution that's a procedure meal fund. That will be presented to you at a regular council meeting next month. For final review and approval.
I believe the problem with that is gonna be though, we're gonna have a pay period already. No?
Pay period is of twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, then I stand corrected. Uh, Robin, are you done, Tony, or?
No, uh, no, but at this point, as soon as there was a pay period, uh, you can make it retroactive and it creates a little more paperwork, but the, it all comes out even if it's one.
Okay.
And then if I may, just before we get on another topic. Just a couple of thoughts that I have just from working with lots of different public and private entities. On this whole issue is that certainly what my takeaway as a semi outsider is is the focus on the, on the miscommunication and, uh, the, or the lack of communication, however you want to characterize it. And to a certain extent, you as a city, you're, you're at a bit of a disadvantage because you're not quite big enough to have a specifically devoted human response.
Right. Correct.
Most, you know, the school district or cities that are slightly bigger than you all have somebody, it's their job to be in charge of these. You know, compensation is an HR. Um, you usually have somebody providing that stuff all the time. And that's their main focus. And you don't have that luxury. That's, there's a downfall to that, but it's okay. So if to avoid these types of circumstances in the future. One thought I had for tonight is, okay, you know, generally, and, and we talked about sometimes there are special exceptions where people have to, have to get a bump. Uh, it's not on the budgetary cycle, and then finally tackle those one off, then two. But if, if the city's normal procedure is to analyze compensation and potential compensation raises at budget time. I think it'd be a good idea to have kind of a kind of a timeline or an agenda that sets certain dates by which certain things are analyzed, right? So like, whatever the budgetary cycle is, if the first step in it is, okay, based on cost of living increases or other factors across the board, what is the city comfortable with providing for a pay increase? Let's use three percent as the example. Okay, so for finance or personnel or whatever committees in charge of that first one says, okay, so we're gonna recommend a, and across the board. Or not, depending on the setting, but we're gonna recommend across the board. With that in mind, the directive would then go to Keith or whomever to say, okay, are there any other employees that based on specific circumstances that would either not merit the three percent? Or would merit higher than three percent? Go back, tackle that, present that as well as a kind of a, a separate issue? Separate line item to personnel or finance for consideration and approval. And then you put it all together at the end. And that way, those types of divisions are clear, they're distinct. And that they don't, you know, it really comes down on the possibility of of maybe the right hand not knowing what the left hand is doing because they're really tackled as two separate issues. Um, that's just the thoughts for this year going into twenty twenty four. Uh, but hopefully avoid these types of issues going forward.
So that's, I, I think why I was deferring to personnel committee, that they can set up that scheduled structure going forward and that we will have that procedure and timeline available for, as you said. So, Robin.
I just, it was my understanding that we're gonna go in close session and I had much of stuff for myself and also for Brenda that I wanted to go over. Do we wanna do that tonight since everyone's here? Or are you saying I should now go on the personnel committee?
Okay, so a couple of questions you had there. First was, it's on the agenda that we could go into this close session if the council chose to, chooses to?
Still can.
Still can. Um, and I would be under the impression that the council would rather hear from you now uh, versus deferring that to personnel to just go back to council. I mean, we're, we're here, so if the council wishes, uh, if, if we're, if we're done with the general conversation, Robin.
I would like to say, yeah, to me, I, and I wanna put it out there too. I think we all feel if somebody deserves a raise, they deserve a raise. But at this point, we, you know, when you do a general across the board, what makes other people think that they didn't deserve a raise or didn't get that opportunity either? That's why I think we really need to utilize the personnel committee and make sure that we have proof of why we gave that raise or why that person or that individual deserved more.
And that's great going forward, but right now we have a situation, how are we gonna fix it?
Well, that's just it. Maybe we can at least come up with information that it has merit there.
The problem is, how do you justify what person deserves more? Why do you think Nathan deserves more than Tony does? Or Tony deserves more than Nathan does? Now, if you ask him, I'm sure if you ask each one, they'd, they'd say, I, the other one would say, I deserve a bigger raise, and the other one, so when you start, when you start doing those types of things, you can run into some, I've been doing this for a long time. When you start doing those things, you can run into some real problems.
Uh, I guess it, it, we can have more conversation in close session, we can come out and look at any further discussion and or any possible action. Um, i- i- is there anything else? Or otherwise I would entertain a motion to go into close session.
I'll make a motion to go into close session.
I'll second it.
Uh, roll please.
What time is it?
Uh, eighteen, nineteen.
Um, Wendy Shelton.
Hi.
Gina Zerman. Robin Nelson.
Hi.
Jeff Conley. Eric Wasdicki.
Hi.
John Blaha.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Kathy Brown.
Yes.
Jim Brewster.
Alright, thanks for coming, Aggie. Robin, if you wanna be sergeant in arms? Lock the doors. Who one are you gonna stick out with us?
I think he's gone.
Yeah.
Good.
No, he's there. Ed Nugent. Turn the volumes down too.
Do you wanna pull that podium up, please, so I can see Robin, she's hiding behind there?
He can sit up here with us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sit up here with us.
Alright, so we are now in close session and, uh, Robin, you have the floor.
Okay. Okay.